It is five o'clock and it is nice to see all of you here this afternoon. I do want to go ahead and let you know that the council will not be taking any action tonight, meaning there will be no actual voting going on this evening. However, we did feel that it was prudent that we provide information to the community as it relates to the Town Terrace Motel and that application with the Historic Preservation Commission. Because it was very important to me that I was able to capture all of the thoughts and conversation of the council, I do have a written statement. I don't normally like to read things to the public, but if you'll bear with me, I think it will capture everything that we need to say. So let me present this information to you. The city of Tifton has long been recognized across our state and region as a leader in economic development, historic preservation, downtown development, and quality community efforts as it relates to arts, education, recreation, and more. And while some say that these ideals are not related, in other words, is historic preservation economic development, or does quality of life impact a tax base? We say that they are intertwined implicitly. It's how we as a community choose to move forward with our resources that makes the difference between a successful community and one that isn't. To be responsive to the needs and desires of our residents and businesses is paramount to a progressive, active, engaging city that attracts visitors, supports existing business, and attracts new residents, business, and industry to the fold. With recent events relating to the Town Terrace Hotel located on 12th Street in the northernmost boundary of Tifton's historic district, the city council felt it prudent to gather tonight to provide information to the community on the process of what has transpired over the last several months. We will not be taking any action tonight. This is not a hearing to support or override any decisions of the Historic Preservation Commission or HPC. Our purpose is not to decide if we, the council, feel that this particular property should be saved or demolished. That is not our role. We wanted to provide the public with specific factual information of what has transpired and to offer options as it relates to the current vote given by the Historic Preservation Commission. As a city of ethics, it is important to each of us personally and professionally that we be transparent. Our goal tonight was to be to provide you with the facts, not innuendo or rumor, but facts regarding the processes that have taken place. Again, this is not an appeal process. Tonight, we planned only to disperse information. There's been quite a bit of public discussion relating to this particular property. The council felt it was necessary to provide you with the facts so that you, the public, know everything that the council knows as it relates to this application and vote. However, I do need to inform you that as of this evening, the applicant has withdrawn their application for demolition of the building. There was also much talk about the recent fire in one of the units on the property. Our fire chief has contacted the state fire marshal to investigate that situation, but at this time, we have no reason to believe that there is any suspicious activity relating to that fire. We stand behind our boards and will be transparent with all information. Our commitment is to support this community and our volunteers and to provide a platform for Tifton to be the best that we can be. I'm sure many of you would like to make public comments. We will be happy to take those public comments, but we'll respectfully request that you be limited to a total of 20 minutes for comments if possible. If we reach that 20 minutes and there are still people who would like to speak, we can extend that if the council chooses to do so. We would like to ask that each speaker have approximately two minutes to address the council or the staff. Again, this is not a hearing, so we'll not be taking any particular questions or voting on anything, but if you would like to ask questions of either our city attorney or city manager, that is open for you to do so. For our records, if you would like to speak to the council, when you come to the microphone here, if you would please state your name and address, and Jessica, our city clerk, will keep record of that and she will be our timekeeper. Do any of you have any other comments before we open the floor for any public information to be shared with the council? Okay? Is there anyone who would like to speak to the council? Yeah, Mr. Fowler?
Yeah, I gotta adjust this.
Okay.
I'm Hayward Fowler. I live at 1018 Park Avenue. I'm about, I would say, two blocks, block and a half away from the Pink Motel, as I call it. I talked to Buck Rickenden, he's one of the owners today, and he informed me that the cell had been rescinded in an effort to create peace and harmony within the neighborhood so that we all don't get upset about it. And we, as a neighborhood, we need to look at the Pink Motel. Even though it's not historic, as such, it is a very unique piece of property that I think that we all, as a community, should be interested in keeping because it is a part of the 50s. And I think that with the right group having it, I think that it could still be maintained and turned into something that would be productive and good for our community. I want to say this too. The owners of the Pink Motel are some of the most outstanding people that I know in our community. One of the owners planted a tree in my yard because my tree died. They love that neighborhood. So I'm not here, you know, to let that be said, that they're not good. They're all excellent people. They bought it to save it. They've had it 10 years and they wanted someone to take it, turn it. I'm not opposed to apartments either because I have apartments right across the street from my house over there. And some of my best neighbors live in those apartments and they take good care of them. So I would hope in a moment of peace, harmony, and love that we all could come to the table and if we want to keep the little motel, that we could find a way to save it and we could keep it and we could say as a community, "Let me tell you what we got that's so unique that you might want to drive by and look at it and have your picture made in front of it." And by all means, just for our people that in different counties, they are filming a segment of a movie there and that's pretty darn good. So I'm gonna give up the podium and let you all listen to some people, but working together and with a spirit of loving one another, we can do a lot of things in our town. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council? Jeff, yes, please.
My name is Jeff Gibbs. I live at 620 College Avenue North in the historic district. And everyone who knows me knows I'm not of a shortage of opinion, so I beg your indulgence for a moment. I've been before the commission numerous times. Sometimes I got what I wanted, sometimes I had to change, sometimes I was turned down. Needless to say, everything that goes before the commission is an emotional issue, but I think an issue like this is exceptional. When you have an issue like the Pink Motel, we need to take extra care of informing the public so that we approach it calmly. My biggest problem is I, as I tried to form an opinion, is I didn't know enough to form an opinion. Not just the facts about the motel and all, but I didn't know enough about the processes. Now, people say, "Well, the meetings are posted, you know they're coming," and whatever. That's not enough. I would like the city or some entity to take a positive approach to teaching us how, what we need to know about this whole process. I mean, it would be helpful. The Pink Hotel issue's gonna come up again, but we need to know, you know, what does zoning have to do with it? How, if it is demolished and there are plans, what approach, what voice we have in those plans? How do you appeal? If it's rescinded back, do you get the, and it comes back, do you get to appeal again? There's just a lot of questions I had and I wish somebody would take a positive effort to try to inform us over the next few months as to what really is going on.
One thing, Jeff, if I may, I have asked Rob to be prepared to present that information to the community this evening with regard to an appeal process. Now, in this particular case, the applicant, this particular applicant has withdrawn their application. But as soon as we get through with public comment, I'll call on Rob to present that information. So you will have that, at least that aspect of it immediately. And I noticed Pete taking notes so we can...
That would just be real helpful because I, as I said, I didn't know enough to form an opinion.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else would like, that would like to address the council?
I have a question.
Okay. Okay, there, okay. If you don't mind, if you'll state your name and address, please.
Sure. I'm Leslie Roach and I live at 1002 North Ridge, but I used to live at, well, actually, that's the address my mom lives at now. I used to live there and I've also lived at 616 North Ridge, been in the neighborhood for a long time. And this might just be an ignorant question, but I need to know. Why is it that the Pink Motels are not a historic landmark?
The, and let me see if I can address that. And I may call on Bruce to, actually, let me go ahead and call on Bruce. Bruce Green, who is currently working with the city of Tifton with our urban redevelopment program, but is considered by many across the state as an expert with regard to downtown development and historic preservation. So Bruce, I'll let you answer that question if you don't mind.
The Midtown Motel for the Town Terrace was built in the 1940s. And if we use the Secretary of Interior's definition, anything that is 50 years old or older than 1969 that retains its original architectural structure or intent, and in this case it does, there have been slight modifications through the years. And if you look at the Midtown National Register nomination, you'd think the hotel would be listed as a contributing structure within the district. Now, when it's listed as a contributing structure, it means that it's not individually listed on the national register, but it's included within the national register listing. So I would say that yes, and in respect to public comment, we normally think of this building or the 1800s building as being historic, but if you look at 1969 or prior and whether or not it's architecturally still intact and has most of its original components, then we would say, the Secretary of Interior of the US would say the Pink Motel is considered as historic.
Does that answer your question?
So, well, in that vein, how can we rip down and destroy a historic building?
Interestingly enough, the Historic Preservation Commission has a set of guidelines called Design Guidelines that were created. They're actually a copy of those that were provided through the US Department of Interior. And many communities across the country use these exact same guidelines. Now, we've tweaked them a little bit over the years to accommodate Tifton and our history and our sort of prevalent architectural styles and things like that, but the basis of the information is the same. Just because you are a national register listing or you are a contributing property doesn't necessarily provide that layer of protection you think that it would as it relates to demolition. So there are cases where, and I'll let our city attorney get into those specific cases where demolition could be appropriate, even though it may be listed on a national register or a contributing building as this is. So I'll let, Rob, do you want to go ahead and address that question while we're here?
Well, I'll say one more thing and then I'll sit down and let somebody else have the floor. When I lived at 616 North Ridge, it was difficult for us to even have a window added to the side of the house. And that house, when we moved in there, was not in the best of condition. So we refinished and refurbished and made that house better. And since then, it's sold to somebody else who's improved it and somebody else. So why can't we just improve the Pink Motels and keep them?
Right.
Anyway, all right.
Thank you. Okay. I'm gonna let Rob, if you, if y'all will permit me to just take a break in public comment, since we had that specific question, Rob, if you want to go ahead and address that, since that's come to the floor.
That's basically what, you know, the guidelines are designed to address as far as getting information, getting reports, so that you can have the necessary data to determine whether or not a historic building can be sold. And naturally, as the guidelines state, because it's such an irreversible situation, you want to make sure that you have that data and have the information, make the informed decision. Now, I don't really recall, I wasn't the city attorney at the time, but you know, we had the Ice House downtown. And my recollection is, is that that was a structural problem. That was asbestos problem. It was a situation that was not able to be economically rehabilitated and therefore it was, but I think there was a slight amount of that as well. So it's not an easy call, but I think one of the things that has brought the concerns, you know, to council and to the public is making sure that when we do, and when the HPC examines the possibility of demolishing the structure, there's kind of caution, due care, with the necessary information, make the informed decision. So there, I'm sure that there will be circumstances in which the particular structure may meet the guidelines that would necessitate a demolition. Hopefully, they're few and far between, but I think that there will be occasions that it will meet that criteria and authorize a certificate of brokenness to demolition.
And I do want to share that this, the guidelines that we're referring to are available on the city website, tifton.net. And I believe you have to go through the particular department, Community Development Department, and then I think you can access them there. But there's a little search tab at the top of the city website. You could type in historic district guidelines and you can, it will send you straight to that so that if anyone is interested in reading through that or getting more information from that particular book that the Historic Preservation Commission uses, you have access to that. It is a public, a public document. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
Mayor, before we move on...
Oh, yes, ma'am. Okay, one second.
I'm sure I had enlightened you in the comments because it was a great question, but we did, we have the information from Sarah Rogers, who's a certified local government coordinator for the Historic Preservation Division at the state level. And I just want to put this on the record so everyone understands that she says that it does appear that the property is in fact listed on the national register and has been since 2009. So I want to make sure everyone's clear on that, that we have heard some comments. Is it risen? But we do have the work on the site that since 2009, there's been more information.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Pete. That's good information to have. Yes, ma'am, if you'd like to come to the microphone room, just state your name and your address.
Yes, ma'am. My name's Sherry Bishop. I live at 308 West 12th Street. I live at the Town Terrace. I've been there for about two years. If everybody's just finding their heart to, you know, to preserve it. If it was on Main Street, they wouldn't allow it to be torn out, just like the Mayan Hotel. You know, it's just as important. We live there, it's peaceful, it's quiet. And there's a lady that's been there for probably 10 years or better. She has nowhere to go and, you know, she doesn't have any family. So if they put us all out, you know, it's gonna be hard.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I want to put that out. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council or ask any questions? Yes, sir.
I've lived about...
Name, name and address, if you don't mind, just for the record. I know who you are, but we need to make sure everyone else has your name and address.
Roy Van Zant, Tipton to the North College Avenue. I've lived, my backyard is probably 100 something feet from the motel and I've been there 19 years and I've talked a lot with the lady many times over the years. She told me a lot about the history of the place and you'd be surprised how many people I talked to. I wasn't raised there, I was raised in Tallahassee. Oh, man, that's the first place I used to go swimming. Kids all over sneaked in there to go swimming for the first, when the swimming pools around. A little louder?
Hi.
Oh, okay. I thought you were doing like a football. Okay. Anyway, I like, the one reason I moved to Tifton was because of these historic buildings. I mean, I just loved it. And there's a lot of history and stories behind it, but anything, if you've got a boat, you've got to float it in water. And then, in the world, water is money. And if there's not enough money to make it float, and what I see is, we've got to address all the problems that people don't like about it, then you've got to come up with a solution how to solve those problems. You know, they say there are certain things, guidelines, that determine maybe you need to demolish it, but you know that the dollar talks. If there's enough dollars, if people are interested enough, most ever problem about it can be remedied. They've got a problem with rats and they've got problems with this, maybe termites and all that stuff. But that's all I can say is, you know, there's so much history and, I mean, I like the, I like the idea of those little separate cabins, things there like 14 by 18. I've taken pictures of them. I'd even thought about trying to get with somebody to duplicate those cabins somewhere else. It's been real popular in a lot of cities to have vintage motorcorks coming back and stuff like that. People like to have a place, they don't want to get up in a big motel. They like to get out of their car and just go in the door. But, you know, that's what I was gonna say, I can see both sides of it, but it will be real profitable for somebody to put the plan you got in there, but history just went out in the wind, you know? And so, that's all I was gonna say is, let's try to, let's try to think about it before it's gone. I mean, we all know about so much stuff in the last 20 years or 30 years that was torn down and everybody goes, "Man, I wish they kept that," but it's always a dollar. That's all I've got to say.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Van Zant. Is there anyone else who would like to speak or have any questions? Yes, ma'am. If you don't mind, when you come to the microphone, if you just state your name and your address, that's all.
My name and my address?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Casey Harrison. I live at 2616 Diana Circle. So I'm not in the historic district, but I do live within the city limits. I just wanted to say, with what occurred with all of this, it was just really hasty. There wasn't a lot to it as far as what we were made aware of. If we could just hold the Historical Preservation Commission to the standards that are put in the guidelines, that would make a huge difference in how things continue to pan out with the city. It just kind of set a bad precedent to know that a piece of property here that is so unique and has so much history to it was really hastily decided to be demolished. And it could almost make a domino effect, you know? People will say, "Oh, well, they took that one down so it wouldn't be anything for more people to come up and say, 'I want a demo, I want a demo.'" But just really glad that we were able to get past this with it and hopefully we see a bright future coming up.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Any other comments or questions? I want everyone to have the opportunity to speak or ask any questions. Now's the time while we have the city attorney, city manager that can answer those questions for us. Any other comments or questions? Yes, ma'am.
I didn't think I was gonna talk. My name is Sherry Calvin. I live at 1811 Red Fox Trail. Like the previous lady that was just here, I don't live in the historical district, but I do live within the city limits of Tifton. By my accent, you can all tell, I'm not from the area. I moved here from Michigan 12 years ago, but I have been coming to Tifton annually for almost 50 years to visit family. The Pink Motel has always been a part of it. Yes, it is emotional, even for somebody not from this area. There's definitely a connection there. I think that when you own a piece of property that says unique, that this particular one is and with the history and just the nostalgia, there's just so much involved with it. It is emotional. And I think that as an owner, you have due diligence or a certain responsibility to seek other options before you just off it. You can't, I can't fathom that you could own this property and simply just sell it without thinking that this was going to happen. On the other hand, you don't know that there's a problem until there's a problem. So I'm glad that the problem has come up. I know that there's been a lot of heated discussions, so hopefully this is the beginning of the end of those heated discussions and I'm really looking forward to see what's gonna happen here because I think it's gonna be some good stuff.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Bruce, I'm gonna put you on the spot one more time if you don't mind. Since this particular applicant has withdrawn their application for demolition, the assumption is that the property is potentially available for a new developer. Would you mind spending just a few minutes while we have the media and we have interested parties to explain potential incentives with regard to state and federal tax credits, potential financing through possibly our Downtown Development Authority, any ability to help with not just this property, but any type of income-producing property or properties within our historic district? Could you share just some highlights about that, if you don't mind, please?
Yes, Mayor. In regards to the economic possibilities with the property from this point on, as I mentioned earlier, the property is considered a contributing structure within Tifton's Midtown National Register nomination, and it is eligible for the 20% federal investment. And what that means is for any developer that chooses to redo it and follow the Secretary of Interior's guidelines, which are spelled out again and were adopted by the city a number of years back and then, and then kind of readdressed in about 2008, 2009. But the federal guidelines will spell out to that potential developer what they should do to adaptively reuse the property. And again, for every dollar spent, there would be a 20% federal investment tax credit that would return, excluding landscaping and excluding new additions to the property. Also, certainly within the city of Tifton, within certain geographic boundaries, we have the enterprise zone, which allows for, given a certain level in investment, you can look at abatement of your city of Tifton property taxes. We do not offer that through the county because that just wasn't set up when the enterprise zone was set up. And then opportunity zones, if you have a historic building or a nonhistoric building that you invest in and subsequently create jobs, you have an option with the Georgia Opportunity Zone and the local one. You can, if you create two or more jobs, you get a $3,500 job tax credit, which is a state income tax credit for each job subsequently created. And there are some caveats that come along with that, but that's the basics of it. And then, again, so enterprise zone is property tax abatement over a period of time based on a substantial and prorated amount out through a number of years to 10. And then the Georgia Income Tax Credit as well. So what happens is when you layer that, you really do create an incentive for people to invest in what we could call kind of a cultural industrial park. It's no different than the Tiff County Development Authority offering incentives to build the new Coca-Cola building. We just, as a community, we offer those incentives. And let's see, I think that was pretty much most of the major ones that we offer. As far as financing, Sunovis Bank currently has a particular low interest rate that they offer. They came to the Development Authority, to the Downtown Development Authority back earlier this year and presented this program. We're one of the few communities in Georgia where Sunovis has offered this, but for investment in the historic district, and this property would be considered inclusive. They have a very competitive market rate on interest and they are looking at a, about 20% of the investment to be spent on the exterior rehabilitation. So we have both from the private sector and from the public realm, we have a number of economic incentives that could be put together in a portfolio to make this property attractive.
And that's something that if someone were interested or if the property owners were interested in getting that information to provide to a prospective buyer, you could help assist with the, because you just threw out a lot of information that's...
I did, yeah.
So you would be willing to assist or Abby with our Downtown Development Office?
That's right. Abby is our Downtown Development Director. I'm serving as the interim Urban Redevelopment Director. And the Pink Motel, the Town Terrace, is located within the boundaries of the Urban Redevelopment Agency. And our office is currently located on South Main Street, but we will be relocating over to the Community Development Office with planning and zoning.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that information. Is there anyone else that would like to make any comment before we sort of wrap things up? Pete, is there any other information that you, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I didn't see, you were behind the column a little bit, couldn't see you.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. I come to speak on behalf of...
Name and address.
Oh, my name is, my name is Lonnie Lewis. I live at 2618 Diana Circle, Tifton. Come to speak on behalf of preserving the Town Terrace. It's a unique facility. It's been there for many, many years. I'm not a Tifton native, but I've loved it ever since I've been here. Some of you know that I drive a car that's 55 years old. I've spent a lot of money keeping it up and keeping it going, but it's a one of a kind. It gets a lot of looks, not worth what it's, what I got in it, but I think we as a community ought to do the same for this facility. So I would just encourage everyone to step up and let's do it.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Lonnie. All right. Pete, any information you'd like to add? Okay, Rob, is there any other information that you'd like to add?
No, here, that's one of the things that had been brought up, there's been a couple of podcasts.
Yes.
People should know that if the HBC makes a decision, that...
If somebody doesn't like, if you have the right to appeal to the council, and basically the ordinance provides that anyone who is adversely impacted by a decision by the HBC has the right to appeal to the council. And that's done within 15 days of the decision, submitted to the city manager, of course, the city council, determine whether or not the HBC abuses the stretch, and generally, that's what they call, be any evidence, but there's evidence in the record in support of the decision, then generally, that's usually dealt by the council.
Okay. All right. Gentlemen, anything you would like to add in closing? Good, okay. All right. Can you make it very, very fast? Make it very, very fast, if you don't mind.
You know, what if the movie company decided to give a little spiff or bonus if the movie did real well and donate toward it?
That's a good idea. Okay.
They're benefiting from the use of it.
Right. All right. In closing, we do acknowledge and appreciate the work that goes into being a board member of not only the Historic Preservation Commission, but all of our boards, from the Downtown Development Authority to the Zoning Board to Keep Tift Beautiful, the newly-created Urban Redevelopment Agency, the Tifton Tree Board, the Tifton Zoning Board of Appeals, Historic Preservation, and all others. This council thanks you for your commitment and your support, your time and your effort in receiving the training to do your job as effectively as possible, and your love of Tifton, and your talents and knowledge as it relates to your service on these particular boards. I can assure you that we are working to make certain that procedurally and professionally all boards will have the resources necessary to complete their tasks at hand. I want to thank each of you for coming out tonight. I appreciate you. This council appreciates you. We appreciate your passion for your community. You, every one of you in this room, are what makes Tifton so unique and so wonderful. And that being said, this meeting is now adjourned. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we have one comment by the attorney.
We're gonna need to go through an executive session.
You told me that, and I let that slip my mind, so very quickly, the only action will be, I will need a motion to go into executive session to discuss legal matters.
So...
Okay. You want a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. We are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.